This conference will now be recorded.
Before we get long into that, I just want to first of all make sure everybody is coming out and sending the agents to the great turnout. The public media is pretty hungry down there. If you have to have us these people down there, it's awesome to get the kind of public attention that they want in the whole community. So in order for this event to be a longer conference, if everybody would be good, that's when we want everybody to have an opportunity to do it. We have some guidelines to public comments on the door. And the city council and I are to issue our public comments during this high key. In doing so, the order must be preserved so that the video will be produced. Our public comments on each agenda will be taken and assessed by public comments portion of the meeting unless otherwise stated on the agenda or allowed by the committee. To ensure that all interested parties have the opportunity to participate, can't maintain any order when the city council meets, the following guideline applies to all public comments. All comments that reside over a twelve week and should be considered as speakers at least three minutes, if my lady or gals stop speaking, may ask for more time. Please note that simply the deep comments are made to agree with prior testimony and state so as to avoid additional comments or information which the council considers are delirious. A member of the council, a public speaker, may not speak more than once within public comments portion of the meeting unless following lines of five prior testimonies. It is not supposed to remain or only council to initiate dialogue with public, in the public comments portion of the meeting. Rather, the public comments portion of the meeting is intended to allow a public to address their counsel, providing input to the right of the agenda high key. All questions must be addressed immediately and will be further questioned if opened in person. No perjury to the council is not called upon by me in all speakers. That I call my most stressed counsel from the county. To allow us to process deliberation of past nervous interructed, as the public comments portion of the meeting is closed, will put other testimonies will be permitted, personally gathered and otherwise addressed by council, from the audience, on board and made to be verified, however. However, the sole right to determine whether any person is out of order and subjects to removal from the meeting. We understand that some of the issues may be a margin charge. These years' title of others' payments cannot happen. Of this process will be more productive if we work for the students because of that sprawl. Remember, these individuals can disagree with the argument of this period. So those are just guidelines to help us facilitate the public's support for the meeting and install a few. Everybody has an opportunity to do this. So with that, we're over into the house, so we'll go ahead and open the room.
The public's meeting is available to the city council alone. This was one of the most important prayers placed at the recent time of the capital match yesterday.
You can stand as they go and join me in my location this evening. Dear Lord, I would like to thank you this evening to ask your guidance as the resident city council administrator, mayor, members of staff, meet and curate about discuss and make decisions for the betterment of this community. We are thankful for their dedication to our city and for their service. We have your protection for all of our first responders, police, sheriff, fire, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staff, all who are twenty-four seven, deserve a checkup at their home carol. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many are fought and by, to be in and preserve for two hundred forty-six years. We ask your blessing and protection for all of our struggling civilians here and throughout the world who serve this great country today, keeping us safe and fresh and without and sadly, threatened with them. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us from our localities, from our community, and all this is prayed in the name of our risen status, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I would like to plead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Paul, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Holden.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Rodgers.
Here.
Cross.
Foster.
Here.
Blitt.
Here.
I would like to make a note, not far, since tonight I'm in the service of the college, seeing type of school we teach and all the we have to do with the students.
Okay, I have a second.
I have a second.
I wasn't there.
I was in focus.
Okay. We're going to start off the service more than, I'm going to give the floor to Chief Board.
I mean, as Detective Green, one of these people that's been there.
This is time to celebrate Detective Green's twenty-five years. Uh, her twenty-five years of service. Detective Green started under God and worked under control, working on many different shows. She found her calling and our investigation. She's worked there for years, handling a lot of different cases. She has a passion for crime against children. She's worked a lot of other types of cases. She's also worked a lot of base businesses at the time of the time of court. And now she's got something more to do as an active. So after twenty-five years, a great celebration.
We're only celebrating five years tonight, but Officer Bean actually started with our department three years ago, as of today. In fact, actually, very long. He's been in our department for five years, works at his department, and he's currently one of our team members. So a lot of great things they could do in the same kinds of community events, wonderful things with the dogs, tracking, and, uh, doing those. Congratulations. We appreciate it.
We thank all of you all for the leadership. Uh, thanks for going to give the floor to Chief Burden.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, tonight we're recognizing Bradley Burton for five years of service. Um, he is short tender with the Sedalia Fire Department. Mr. Burton had started as firefighter and has acted similarly to himself in the range of fire in that five years. He's also one of our combatant officers. Um, he's done a number of things, and I am part of one of them. But he told me before, Council meeting, that his lifelong dream is to have something from the air.
Well.
Well, the next time we have our committee, we need a public hearing regarding the annexation of the lot thirty-three, gave stage two. We're going to open a public hearing. Anyone has any comments regarding the annexation of the fish except the public? We've got three minutes to go ahead and make this comment. Have you heard enough? We'll go ahead and open the public hall. If you'd like to go ahead. Just send me any address.
I'd like to thank the city council and the public council, that are huge and known and we can bring them over.
I have a little, uh, we see that target.
So this public hearing is regarding the annexation of the lot thirty-three, gave us, we've got, yeah, we have one more public hearing regarding this person.
Oh, it's okay.
Okay, fine. We've almost got our third.
All right, having heard the public comments regarding the annexation of the lot thirty-three, we're going to open the public hearing.
And next we have the public hearing regarding the annexation of the lot thirty-three, gave us, uh, we will stage two.
We're going to open the public hearing.
Anybody have any comments regarding the annexation of the fish?
That's the part of the question.
Have you heard enough?
We have a public hearing. And now we have the public hearing regarding the Spring Fork. And hopefully we go ahead and have the administrator drop, they just give some background information and we'll open up everyone's public comments.
Great. So reiterate, uh, there's comments, uh, hopefully we have visiting folks that are, uh, that are used to know, to be part of the process. So, um, to give you a little bit of background, uh, we discussed at a previous council meeting that no existence would, uh, give shooting saw for the drinking water. This is a product from a hundred and twenty-five acre lake that was created on about four hundred and fifty acres of otherwise mostly wooded area, flowing even about ten miles down to the river. And, uh, I passed around a few, sorry I didn't turn it over, but I passed around a few maps there that could give you all a, uh, key to or a picture of where it's at. And then I have one put up on the screen as well. Uh, several years ago, this lake was used as a water source for Sedalia. It was purchased and constructed by the Water Department, uh, and has provided the vast majority of the drinking water source there. However, since it's no longer used, we'll have four drinking waters, the cost of maintaining the property is not specified, um, as it's charged in the rate of payers of those of the water users. Therefore, the city needs to decide how to handle the ongoing costs, including maintenance of the dam, still control, vegetation management, et cetera, or if it is more free to sell the lake with the base of property or investment in other assets to benefit the water department. Um, to eliminate the ongoing costs, or certainly there's many other options, uh, some things of the training, uh, public private ownership, uh, all, all the things for the city to consider.
A cooperative agreement was entered into several years ago with the Department of Conservation and they manage that today as far as the recreational aspects of the fishing. Uh, that cooperative agreement, they built the dock that's out there, the, um, the boat ramp and those kinds of things. They also help us manage, uh, like the algae balloons and those kinds of things that pop up from time to time. So, uh, that is, is already ongoing or is, is part of the deal. Um, as discussed, keeping the property certainly has ongoing potential as public benefit, while on the other hand, those benefits come at a cost. Therefore, if we are going to use public funds, we should solicit input from such public as to what extent they would value these benefits. Hence the reason why we're here today. So we are very much looking forward to hearing your all's comments as to, um, what you all would like to see done with that list.
With that, we'll go ahead and open the public. Now we'll go ahead and invite you up. You got your name and address? You got three minutes?
All right. Mona McFlurry, three one one three five Sunrise Lane. Um, I don't know that I agree with, um, the fact that he said that there was no longer any drinking water value with the lake. Um, I think that it does have value. Um, my husband and I gathered water quality data on Spring Fork Lake from two thousand four until two thousand twenty-one as part of the Lakes of Missouri Volunteer Program. The samples we collected were tested at MU Columbia and our compiled and report, you can find at L V M V P dot org, Lakes of Missouri Volunteer Program. After seventeen years of monitoring the water quality in Spring Fork Lake, I can tell you, yes, it does have problems, but that doesn't mean the city should sell the lake to the highest bidder. Back in the early two thousands, when Bob Watson was mayor, there was also talk of selling the lake. Watson supported the creation of a source water protection committee. Part of our duties included researching the cost of draining, dredging, and restoring the lake for drinking water purposes. At that time, a similar project had just been completed at Blind Honey Reservoir in New Sweet Springs at a cost of one million dollars. I know the cost of restoring the lake has increased since then, but it still makes sense to keep and preserve a public water source since we have no idea how future climate changes could impact our area. We currently rely on groundwater only, and while the Ozark Aquifer is reliable now, it can and will be depleted at some point because our water usage is higher than the aquifer's recharge rate. Three observation wells for Sedalia and Dresden have shown a steady drop in the water table over the past twenty years. What will happen over the next two decades? People out West thought they could never deplete the huge Okawala Aquifer, but they have, and when it's gone, it's gone. Walls run dry and they can remain dry for decades or forever. It only makes sense for Sedalia to continue ownership of a surface water resource where we already have the infrastructure from there to the treatment plant in place, even if it needs repair. Our population continues to grow. We want industry and business to move to this area and all of that requires more water. Keeping Spring Fork Lake gives Sedalia the option of using this surface water resource should we ever need it. It could also be used to add water to the system, reducing pressure on existing wells and increasing their lifespan. If the city council had voted to restore the lake twenty years ago, as the source water protection committee advised, I wouldn't be standing here today. But I am, and nothing has changed. Yes, the lake still has issues, and yes, it is expensive to restore and maintain the lake, but a water source is always a worthwhile investment. When Bob Watson was mayor, he understood the importance of the lake, and when he realized it was not going to be fixed during his term in office, he passed a proclamation that Spring Fork would remain under city ownership for another ninety-nine years. What happened to Mayor Watson's proclamation?
What was that, Mona?
It would have been around two thousand seven, so.
What was that, in case for clarification, what was the name of that committee that was formed again?
Sedalia Source Water Protection Committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we got an open podium. Whoever'd like to go ahead and step up and speak next. Mona?
Hello, my name is Yale Foster, twenty-four sixteen Golf Drives, Lake of Missouri. Well, I don't think we should sell the lake because, uh, a lot of people love the lake and a lot of people come from far, far places away to just come to the lake and fish, have fun. And I know that a lot of people just come around from everywhere to find one good fishing spot, and there's a lot to, just in the woods, we can explore there, try and find different kind of wildlife. We can, if we do sell that and they do tear down, the odds of wildlife there, that can... And it is part of our history. It's been around for a hundred years, and I don't think we should get rid of some of our history like that because it's causing problems for our city. Thank you.
All right. Mona?
My name is John Gertler. My brother is Charles Gertler, and I own all the property outside of the lake. I'll be talking more about the property than the lake. Our creek that flows through there right now with the straw is not running. So, anyway, uh, my main reason for being here is to bring attention to the seven acres that was taken by eminent domain from my grandmother, parked in nineteen thirty. Now, back then, it was explained to the family that if your, the lake was ever to be, to quit using it as a water source, that land could be returned to the family. If you look on your map, on the south side of the map, that funny little jog is what was taken from my grandmother. Okay. Um, the reason it was taken, because they didn't want hogs raised into the creek. I've got more paperwork on it. I'm not aware that really grandmothers even raised any hogs on that property. The lake is no longer being used for drinking water, so it should be returned to the family as promised. Okay. The reason I feel that remaining property should not be sold is because it is apparently a refuge for wildlife. I have observed hundreds of eagles migrating, flying up in the air, casting their talons, free-falling over there on the south side. I, I think it's worth keeping just for the wildlife reason. Um, I see other wildlife there that needs to be, had their homes preserved. There's also a security issue when you return to the sale of the property and a foreign interest gets involved, were you aware of it at the time of the sale or not? It's only twenty-one miles across country to Wrightman Air Force Base from Spring Fork Lake. The last people that tried to buy it had entities from the Netherlands, and if you looked it up on Google, there was people from Sri Lanka. So we don't know where the outside source was. I spoke my piece. If any member of the council would like to talk to me about this, I'm more than willing.
Thank you, John. And can we get your, uh, address for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Three five seven seven six, Rob and Gun Club Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got an open microphone. And we've got more people out there. Mona?
Good evening, city council members. Uh, my name is Aaron Rollins, thirty-three twenty Cedar Spring Street. Uh, moved up here back in twenty eighteen with Nucor, uh, as the city's environmental supervisor. And ever since then, um, I've spent a lot of my time in Spring Fork Lake. I'm an avid kayak fisherman. Um, and many days since I moved up here that I've said that called Sedalia home, I've spent it at Spring Fork, uh, taking it part of my favorite hobby. Uh, that lake truly is a hidden gem when it comes to fishing and the wildlife. Um, and it's a resource that's used by thousands annually in our community. Um, why is it so important to me? From a safety standpoint, again, I, I fish out of a kayak. This time of year down at Lake of the Ozarks and Truman Lake can be pretty dangerous at certain times of the day. So for myself, other kayak fishermen, as well as people who can invest in larger boats, Spring Fork really does give us a place where we can fish in safety, whereas we can't really do that down at the lake. Um, proximity to Sedalia, you know, being so close, not having to go all the way to Warsaw. Um, other people that are using Spring Fork to put food on the table for their families. So there's a lot of benefits to it. Um, at the end of the day, government at all levels is by the people for the people. Um, any action that removes public use of Spring Fork Lake would be a major failure of our government, acting in the best interest to provide adequate natural resources for its people. Um, selling the lake property could prevent the average constituent from being able to enjoy its benefits and appropriate those benefits only to the select few who are able to use it after that sale. Um, understand that there's cost to maintaining it, so just a few ideas off the top of my head. There's a lot of businesses and industry here in Sedalia that maybe we need to be seeking, uh, seeking some support from. Um, things come to mind like some kind of investment incentives, um, hosting some fishing tournaments to gain some money and funding to help, help those costs. Um, whatever vendors and contractors were using for the dam maintenance, for the vegetation, soil control, maybe we need to simply ask them what they will do on their costs to leverage it to help us out because they may have their own vested interest in that resource. Road upkeep, upkeep, there is gravel road there. I know a steel mill just up the road that makes some slag as aggregate, might be able to get good cost there and save money on rocks. So hit me up if you have any questions on it. Any other programs offered by the state or federal level that can help us out, let's make sure we're looking at all of those. Um, compromise, you know, there is two lots there, there's a lot of wooded property. Maybe there's a compromise where we sell some of the wooded property, but still keep the lake buffered to where we can still get some funds, but some of the property that's not being used, maybe that reduces some costs there. Um, and then if all else fails, if all else fails, maybe some kind of usage fee. The goal would be keeping the burden as minimal on the people that use it, but maybe some kind of boat launch fee, a daily annual use. Again, keep the burden low, and that's the last, last ditch effort. Thank you all for seeking input from the citizens of Sedalia on this matter. And now, as a matter of one still in here by chance, on a funny note, when I walked in here today, he told me that he lives vicariously through me on Facebook through my fishing and stuff. So if it was sold, if there was any detriment to Spring Fork, it would be a major detriment to him. Living vicariously through me, so I'll end on that comment.
All right, two left. Mona?
Harry Hoferd, fourteen oh eight South Barrett. I'd like to just touch on what he did. Everything that he said is how most of us were raised. We're raised around fishing, seeing wildlife. At the rate that businesses are moving in in the surrounding area of Sedalia, which is amazing, we're drawing in good businesses. But to have a place like Spring Fork, how much more land is available to build that? It's, it's not out there. The woods, the lake, I mean, I don't know a place that you could turn that and try to mimic that anywhere else. We've got it right here. Um, I agree with everything he has said about the, the fees, the, the boat launch, maybe a yearly pass to access there. Um, I've taken my kids there, I'm fifty-eight, they're thirty-five. They were fishing out there when they were three and four. Um, safety, definitely. The only concern that I've seen is in the transition from, when the conservation and then after that, there's been a lot of, uh, I'd say, that people that I see just on the grounds to make it feel to where there's not trash, there's not needles, there's not things like that. Conservation has put a lot of money in to that dock and that ramp, and it, to me, it just seems silly to, to put that away. You know, we're here in the middle of all these lakes, Monata, Manitoba, and Tipton. You know, that's an hour drive if you want to go fish that lake. Our parks are amazing. We've got Liberty Park, great fishing for the kids in town and everybody. We've got great fishing out at Cloverdale. But have you ever went to go fishing and just wanted to sit on the bank and look at nature, look at deer walking around, look, hearing turkeys gobble in the morning, hearing ducks fly over and getting ready to land on the, out there at Spring Fork? I mean, it's all there, and it's, it's right here in our backyard, and I don't think we need to get rid of that in any way. And I'll do anything or talk to anybody that needs help, getting ideas, trying to get funding, trying to do any of that, um, sign me up. So, uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I'm Susan Daniels, twenty-two oh one West Second Street Terrace, and I was here the night, I was on the council when we voted on Bob's, uh, I don't remember what it's called, I'd like to know. But I know that every single councilman signed that paper that night, and there has to be some. Unless people deliberately took it out of this building, it would be in with all the other records. There's just no other way to think because I saw it with my own eyes and wrote on it.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Mona?
Trishy Osberg, six twenty-one Katie Circle. I recently retired from the Missouri Department of Conservation. I was a fisheries biologist for over thirty years, and I managed the lake for most of my tenure at the department. I can say it has a wonderful fishery, so a lot of these people can attest. Um, I've noticed since the infrastructure that we put, the conservation department put in at the lake, fishing pressure and use of the lake has gradually gone up over time. Um, every time you go out now, you see people, people in boats, on the docks, kayakers, some are fishing, some are just recreating. Um, and I'd like to see that keep happening. I think it's an important resource for our community. Uh, where else can you be? They talk about close to home fishing. That's exactly what the conservation department's program is. It's fifteen to twenty minutes to get here. If you only have part of a day to go fishing, it's really easy to jump down to Spring Fork. If you want to go to the bigger lakes, like the gentleman said, you need a bigger boat and you need a lo, longer time. Being in the recreation and the outdoors, I also saw it increase drastically during the COVID time. A lot of people started getting out, and it's important to note that being out in nature, being outside is very good for our mental health and our physical well-being. So that said, we have a valuable resource and I feel we need to keep it. Thank you.
All right. We got an open microphone. Anybody else want to step up and take a stand on it? Come on, man.
I'm sorry, is that me or brothers? I, I, um, we got half the people in here, nobody, because I'm out there all the time.
I'm gonna let, uh, my name's Jim Lewis, and I'm at one hundred Katie Circle, um, and I would like to see the lake remain kind of pretty much as it is. Um, I fish there more than I bet anybody in here, so I know the lake. Um, there's lakes in Tipton, there's Um, there's lakes in Tipton, there's lakes in Warrensburg, there's lakes in Concordia, there's lake in Harrisonville, Higginsville, you name it, we got the best one right here, bar none, okay? If you need to all fish, or if you don't, come out and look at the eagles. This gentleman was talking about eagles. I was out there two years ago and there was over fifty eagles out there and they would just come right over your boat. It's awesome. There's deer all the time, there's turkey all the time, there's, first of all, there's big catfish. Uh, day before yesterday, I caught one eleven pounds and I was bass fishing. Uh, I've caught bass over seven pounds, I've caught crappie over two pounds, I've caught bluegill and red deer over a pound. There's just big fish. People don't know that and maybe you all, maybe you shouldn't tell anybody because, you know, keep it to yourself and keep your fishing spots to yourself. There's this gentleman back there that just catches crappie all the time. And it, it's just a great lake and please don't do anything to it because it would ruin a lot of people's, you know, like Trish had said about, uh, just being outside, how it, you know, it's just good for the soul and Spring Fork's a great place. And it does have some issues, you know, if, I, I wouldn't mind having some trash cans out there. Well, then you gotta have somebody come up and pick it up. Well, shoot, I mean, uh, I'll do my part, you know, I'll drag some back into town to my house if I have to, but it would be nice because there are people that they'll bring in a lot of stuff, but they don't want to carry it back out because, you know, they got three fish on a stringer or something, I don't know, but they just don't do it. And that's just their upbringing, you know? But anyway, if that, that might help a little bit if there was a trash can or two. Um, the road itself, you know, if it, if it had been paved thirty years ago, you know, it would have been paved for ten times, but that's another story. Um, but I appreciate all these people here because it's very, very important to me. So, um, thanks for the opportunity and, uh, that's about it, but please give us a chance to enjoy it because it's a great lake. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Just one more thing. Um, I've got a nephew and his son and his daughter and I've got about three neighbors and every one of those that I mentioned have all caught the biggest fish of their life, fishing with me at Spring Fork. So it's, it is a good lake.
Uh, my name is Dennis Thornton, I live at sixteen oh three Country Club Boulevard in Sedalia. Uh, my dad has had me out there fishing since nineteen sixty-eight. So it's been fifty-some years that I've been able to go to that lake and enjoy as everything that everybody has been saying. Um, today I went out to lake, never caught one bag on fish, but I picked up two bags full of litter. So it's not, I'm not above doing anything like that to preserve this wonderful area that we have. Over, uh, last week, uh, my son is a veteran, uh, during the year we take out veterans snagging, he is a captain down on Lake of the Ozarks. And we take out, last year, this past year, we took out a hundred and twenty-seven veterans, disabled and otherwise. That's not including just the disa- disabled children and people that we take out. The last two days, we took out a hundred and seventy-five people. Since Spring Fork has been there over, you know, probably the last fifteen years, I've taken out child after child after child. Saturday or last week, I took out a little boy that's ten years old, been taking him out there since he was five, dying of cancer. He looks forward to that every day. And, you know, like, and, um, you know, like I said, I, I know it's been over a hundred children that I've been able to take out there. Uh, you know, I'm from the big family. I have nine brother, or eight brothers and sisters. My sister Rhonda is the youngest one, she owns Premier Realty and my brother Don is the oldest one. Uh, and we've all fished out there and done, you know, totally enjoyed, uh, what we do and everything that goes on. You just don't get, all I hear from, you know, I've met a lot of new kayakers, you know, they came and were talking and they said, "This is a honey hole," said, "I, it's just a hidden secret." It is a hidden secret and we're glad to have it. I don't like, I wouldn't like to see the change of anything different than what it is now unless maybe the conservation would be willing if they put that money in it to take it over and keep it for us to be able to do something. You know, it would be great, it would be wonderful, but I would love to have that heritage for my kids and they're taking their kids out and my grandkids. I took out my great-grandchild two weeks ago, one year old. And the peace and serenity that you get out there is amazing. You don't get it anywhere else. And you don't have to worry about the gas motors, all that stuff going on, trolling motors, you get quiet, nice, peaceful recreation, family wholesome recreation that you don't get anywhere else. And they're not sitting in front of computers somewhere, they're actually enjoying what the good Lord has given to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Stanley Joe and my residence is twenty-four oh one South Marshall. I have lived in Sedalia most all of my life so far. I'm eighty-two years old. When I was eighteen years old, the city council shut down Spring Fork Lake to fishing. Nobody told me. The next morning, I was standing in the south end catching a stringer of fish. I got home with him, Dad said, "Where you been?" I said, "I've been out Spring Fork." He said, "They closed that last night, don't go no more." And I, I agree with everyone that came up here, that is one of the most beautiful places that there is around on God's green earth. And, uh, I have been out there fishing a lot. Jim and Dennis there, they know that. And I have caught, I'm gonna say lots of crappie, I have fed lots of people and I have a terrible time keeping below my limit of crappie, which is sixty. I have to stay below that and it's very, very hard, but I enjoy it and I've seen all kinds of people out there, uh, fishing. There's, um, a young couple that's been coming out there and they're bringing her family with kayaks and they are from Lebanon, Missouri. And, uh, there's one guy, uh, two weeks ago, run a bass tournament out there, he's the company rep for Garmin LiveScope and I actually saw him catch, uh, one of the big winners down by the tower. And, uh, as far as the wildlife goes, I can only second what the people have said. Uh, I see the eagles, I see deer all the time. Uh, earlier this spring, uh, me and my fishing partner, as we was coming up to the gate, uh, there was at least twenty-five turkeys standing in the road and we started honking at them and they were, most of them were gobbling, they were gobbling. Every time we honked, they gobbled. And here's a rarity, about a month ago, I was out there and there was a loon out there. Loons are not native to Missouri and if you've ever been to Canada, you, you can hear them a lot and you'll know what they sound like, but there was only one and he stayed for about two hours and then he disappeared. And as far as subsidizing the place, the idea for me, man, I didn't know I was that long-winded. Um, log the place off and sell it to somebody that'll give you the right amount of money to help fix the dam. And it's not gonna hurt the timber, uh, when them big trees are gone, them little trees will get some sunshine and they'll be the next logging out in another thirty or forty years. So keep the lake.
Thank you, Mr. Gobbi.
Marvin Logan, two three four six nine Mather Road. I live just west of the lake, lived there my whole life. Um, I think we dodged a huge bullet when this deal just fell through because the same people that were trying to buy the lake were trying to buy the farm between my house and the lake and the rumor was turned into a cattle feed lot. I don't believe anybody in Bennett County wants one of those on that corner with landfill, that corner. And I would love to see the lake stay just as it is. It's, it's just like everybody says, peaceful, beautiful place and needs to stay that way. Thank you. I, I have a lot of questions, but I don't have to have them answered tonight. Somebody wants to talk to me later, we can get those, take, take care of it. That's it for now. Thanks.
All right, who's next?
Vanessa Bryant, two ten Tower in Sedalia. I didn't plan to speak, but I guess since everybody else is, I will too. I lived out there for many years, not far from there and I fished at the lake and been out in that area, mushroom hunted and everything. And I agree with everything everyone has said. Uh, I think maybe that it would be good if we could start getting together some, uh, good ideas to maybe help, which somebody had brought up about like a usage fee. You know, when you go fish at Truman, uh, they have a box down there if you're gonna put your boat in or whatever, you're supposed to put your name on that little envelope and put your money in that little envelope and there's a drop box there and, and, uh, I remember many years ago, I don't know who was taking care of the lake back then, but many years ago, uh, they used to say there was little boats out there that you could rent these little boats and, and they sold bait and stuff out there. And so you actually had a person that was out there to kind of just oversee. And maybe we could even get volunteers of people that would maybe at least, maybe Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, maybe we could arrange to have some volunteers that could go out and kind of oversee. And when you have people that are out there kind of as an overseer of what's going on, it might make it for less trash. And trash is very disgusting to me and when I fished at Truman and all of that, I'm picking up other people's trash too. I've been on the beaches in Florida and I'm picking up people's trash off of there and pieces of glass and I do that everywhere I go. And maybe we could just start trying to work on some ideas to be able to keep this as a resource. You know, there's all this, uh, publicity for, uh, people to go to Branson, come to Branson, come to Branson, you know? Uh, all these different other lakes and Truman and, uh, come to Truman, you know? Well, come to Sedalia, you know? And if we could get that organized to where that we would have somebody to kind of oversee the lake, that would be great. And, you know, as far as fishing goes, you know, I haven't been able to go down to Truman in the past couple of years because of my health. But I'm gonna tell you what, the last couple of times I was down there, we always fished in that cove, we'd go below the dam there and then that cove up in there. And the last several times that I was down there fishing, these jerks in there, speedboats were flying up through there and then they stood out there with their stereos a blasting, well, you can forget your fishing then. I can't do anything about that going on, but at least at Spring Fork, that's not allowed. You can't get your speedboats in there, I guess, and, and do those kinds of things. Anyway, thanks for listening and I really hope that we can keep that as a resource in Sedalia and we just start, need to start getting together some really good valid ideas of how to make this work. Thank you.
Monica?
Okay, uh, William Harden, two zero one forty-six. Well, every year, me and my wife sit down, we always schedule a budget on how much I can go fishing. If I have to drive to Truman every week, I can only go fishing so many times a year. But if we keep Spring Fork the way it is, I can go fishing a lot more. And I need this, I need that sanity in my life, you know? Um, I have a seven-year-old daughter and her first experience fishing out there was not so good because she fell out of the boat, but she always talks about it, she's always still wanting to go back and she always runs the bait shop in my boat and always hands me my jigs and my worms. And then she always keeps track of who catches more fish, dad or mom. Not gonna lie, went out there last week and I lost big time. The wife caught like seven crappie and I'm over there just looking at my LiveScope going, "Well, there's the fish," but she had the worms and I had the jigs, so she won that battle. But my family really enjoys fishing Spring Fork Lake, just for simple fact that it's close to home. You know, fishing is fishing. Yeah, I can go down to Truman, but, you know, here I can bring home thirty small crappie and all my daughter cares about is eating the crappie. But, uh, it's just a real good resource, you know? I can ver- I can verify the eagles, they, there's a lot of eagles there. Um, yeah, that lake needs some work, it's got a huge vegetation issue because here shortly the lily pads are gonna take over and that's all she wrote. But, uh, oh, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
All right, who's up next? Can you take it? Yeah, maybe if I could just get a show of hands on everybody that agrees with the comments that have, uh, been presented here at the table. All right. Well, people, uh, have to speak pretty loudly, it sure does. Well, we were, on behalf of the city council, just want to thank everybody for coming down, uh, providing some public input on what direction we need to move with the lake. Sounds like the, the public is speaking loudly regarding Spring Fork Lake. Uh, as far as next steps, uh, the, uh, the online survey?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll try to get an online survey out to get additional input and, and hopefully, uh, through that, you know, some, uh, somebody, or a couple people mentioned, you know, getting together and ideas, thoughts, those kinds of things. So, uh, that will be, watch for that and that'll be an excellent opportunity to, to continue the conversation, get some more thoughts out there and, uh, kind of see some things about how to pay for it. We've heard some thoughts here tonight, so, uh, but, uh, as Mayor said, we, we greatly appreciate everybody's input and interest in participating in the process, so thank you so much.
And maybe after we use that, uh, and might suggest that the council, the council's open to it, after we get the, uh, information back from the online survey, we schedule like a work session where we can go through and review that, uh, review some of the additional, you know, some, we're getting some figures back regarding spillway, take a look at those things, some of those costs that are gonna, what it's gonna cost us to prepare that and we'll debate that out. Will you guys be open to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Barry, you got something to say?
Yeah, as soon as you get that information from the online survey and all the reunitions and, you know, get a PSA on that, because sometimes, I would think just by putting out the internet survey that a lot of individuals didn't utilize it, did not have internet access. And I think we just, this doesn't have to be here today, but I think it needs to be the surroundings today where everybody can, because there's, you know, the two cents in on it.
Yeah, we get, yeah, we'll certainly get a PSA out and, uh, get that to the radio. Yeah, we get, yeah, we'll certainly get a PSA out and, uh, get that to the radio stations and newspapers. Is that up there?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming down. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
We will move on to the next agenda. Well, we wanna thank you all for, for, uh, here, here to a heart and, and, and the years, I should have been saying this before. Thank you. And you are welcome. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Eric?
Maybe you and me need to get together and get our creative minds together on a fun rate.
Hey, Triff.
Your Honor, Your Honor, can I make a motion that will be great for about five minutes to let everybody clear out?
All right, we're gonna stay in the motion. I want you to say it.
I didn't hear you.
I want you to say it.
I'm sorry, please.
I want you to say it.
All right.
I want you to go. I can break for five minutes. What do we do? Okay.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I mean, I can't wait.
Now, I'm so sorry you spent the day with my chair.
You doing good?
Yeah.
You doing good?
The crowd was crowded. It was usually been, uh, burnout. We were getting a lot of crowds even closer to the side. No, it's just, it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. Before I move to the next, we're still on one for a minute. We're, we're here in, we're here in the mid-eighties. We'll bring it back for now.
All right. We're gonna call this meeting back to work and get back on the agenda. Uh, next item is the approval of previous session amendments made May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to second? Motion to approve. Exactly. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You can vote passes. Thank you. Now we have the, uh, we'll call from our standing committees. First is Finance Administration, Chairman Mark C. Evans.
All right. I have, uh, two items on my report tonight. Uh, first is a discussion and possible direction for the council regarding amending four fifty-seven plans to allow in-service distributions of age sixty-five to ninety-nine. I'll let Administrator Shaw explain the plan in its current state and the proposed amendment.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll be, be brief here, but, uh, uh, basically we have a deferred compensation plan that we offer to our employees. It's completely voluntary. Uh, there is no matching contributions, but, um, uh, each of our, uh, full-time staff members have the opportunity to set aside a certain amount of their, uh, wages on a tax advantage basis. Either they can do it as pre-tax, so, um, it's, uh, it's, it's not taxed when they set it aside. But if they do it that a way, then when they draw it out, presumably when they retire, then it's, then it's taxed as compensation at that point. Or they can set it aside after tax, you know, what they call Roth, R R, or Roth, um, plan. And, um, and it's, it's taxed as compensation before they put it away. But then the earnings on that that they set aside is never taxed. And, um, currently, the plan does not allow what they call in-service, uh, uh, distributions or withdrawals. So they have to actually leave their, our employment before they can withdraw it. Even though, when they reach the age of fifty-nine and a half, it is, uh, according to the IRS regulations, they can withdraw it. So, uh, inadvertently, part of what we're offering as a benefit to keep employees, we're giving them a reason to leave us. And so, uh, it's my recommendation that we amend that plan to, uh, allow for in-service, uh, withdrawals a- as long as they've reached the retirement age of fifty-nine and a half. Um, uh, however, we wanted to discuss that with you because drawing up the documents is, there's a cost to drawing up the documents. So we wanted to make sure you all were in support of it before we spent the money to, uh, draw up that amendment. So just wanted to discuss it with you and get your direction. If you, uh, so wish, you could direct staff to draw up the amendment and we'll get it done.
Do you have a question on cost?
I think it's three fifty. It's not a lot, but it's like...
Yeah.
No question.
Any objection, counsel?
None.
Then we'll go ahead and proceed with that. That seems like, uh, to be a good retention tool, especially facing the labor pressures that we all.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Sam?
Uh, no. The only thing that I was just gonna add is it's, it is actually for full-time and part-time employees that are able to participate in the, in the four fifty-seven. So, um, I think it would be great. We've had a couple instances recently where we've had employees that have retired from the city, that have come back to work for us part-time. And so that's what has, has raised this to our attention recently. So I think this would be great and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, I have a, a call for a resolution and ordinance amending the budget regarding opioid prevention program. Uh, our CEO from, uh, Boffwell is here to provide details and answer any questions.
Well, go ahead and yield the floor to, uh, Lori and then Brad Nicholson, Pharmacy Director.
Hi, thank you. I am really just going to introduce Brad Nicholson, who's our Director of Pharmacy. He knows all about this program and can answer any of your questions.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the time to come here on Boffwell's behalf to discuss a few very briefly and answer any questions about what clinical, controlled substance, software surveillance is, and what Boffwell has done and where we're planning on moving. As everyone knows, uh, there's an opioid epidemic in the United States right now. And healthcare is not immune to diversion and those types of, of things that occur. It is a requirement of the Joint Commission for accreditation of hospitals to do opioid stewardship. The hospital has engaged a number of, uh, initiatives. Uh, right now, currently, what we do is we have three different systems that we print out reports and we go through every day to put together to look for signs of diversion or any kind of patterns of, of abuse with narcotics and the controlled substances. Uh, it's extremely time-consuming. What a clinical software, controlled substance surveillance software does is it pulls all that data together and start looking for patterns of behavior. It starts looks for dispensing issues, waste issues, waste that have not been done in a timely manner. And it actually, it, uh, encompasses an AI, an artificial intelligence to kinda bring those things together to point out possible areas of diversion in a timely manner so that those can be addressed in the first place. We had, um, worked with a vendor and when we put in the bid and our capital budget, uh, I talked to that and every hospital pretty much in the country has, uh, clinics, ambulatory clinics. And so my question to them was, if we went with you, what would you do for us? What is your outpatient surveillance system? Well, they were working on it, but they didn't have a plan. So I discussed with them, if Boffwell would sign with you, I would like a discount to be a beta site to look and see what are the patterns of behavior for my prescribers. There's a thing called morphine milligram equivalent. It's Dr. A prescribing the same type as Dr. B. So, um, they've come back with a, a bid that I thought was reasonable for what we were getting with that. So being a partner for a beta site, I thought would be a good way for us to go on the ground floor to maybe help other hospitals besides our own people, uh, here in Sedalia. If there's extra money that you all just have lying around, we have some other initiatives that we would like to, uh, look into. Lori and I described some things. I talked to one of Boffwell's vendors for vending machines. And they would get us some vending machines, some small vending machines. And as you know, the state of Missouri is, is giving away Narcan nasal free. Now, the City Council, I've talked to Sheriff Anders, I know that's a county, but we're still in the same area. So whether that be at the police department or the sheriff's department or at the hospital emergency room, people wanna be anonymous when they come in to get Narcan. They may have a grandmother that keeps some Percocet and her grandchildren around. You never know when this is gonna happen. So there's some other opportunities I can throw out for you all to say, if there's any other opioid stewardship money, I'll spend it for you. So, do you have any questions or concerns that I can answer for you tonight?
So the, the software currently will be able to flag, uh, misuses or possible misuses of the, of opioid medications and then that would be something that we could kinda control or, uh, help limit.
Correct. What it does is it takes all the users in the system and it looks for patterns. And then it, it, you know, it takes that entire hierarchy of one, two, three, and then it says, okay, you need to look at this. And that does not mean for, for a hospital the size of Boffwell, we may have one nurse that works on a unit, an orthopedic unit, for example, that gives lots of, of a certain thing. That's not to pull everybody out. But, you know, you look at travelers, you know, the hospitals had a lot of issue with travelers and contract health. Not saying that everybody's bad, but you, you have to be vigilant and diligent today in healthcare.
Any comments, questions?
How long is the contract for?
It's a three-year contract.
And it's the beta. For the beta program?
Yes. Three-year contract and it's, they gave us a discount, uh, off of that of seventy-five-hundred incentive. So it's gonna be twenty-two thousand five hundred per year for three years. And then there's a one-time implementation fee that they gave us ten thousand dollars off. So instead of twenty-five, it's gonna be fifteen for the one-time implementation fee.
Any other questions, counsel?
So what's the first year total then?
The first year total was thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
And that, that's what's in front of you all, is a budget amendment for the thirty-five? Any further questions, counsel? All right. Well, I appreciate you coming down.
All right. Again, thank you for all's time tonight. Have a nice evening.
All right. Well, I would like, we'll, uh, go ahead and call for, uh, reading of the resolutions regarding this budget thing.
Resolution two thousand twenty-five. The resolution of the City Council, the city of Sedalia, is already stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? My passus, thank you, counsel. Uh, now I would call for the reading of the ordinance with regards to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four regarding opioid prevention programs. Second reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? My passus, thank you, counsel.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four regarding opioid prevention programs. Final passage.
Full call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Chairman Marshall. And next we have Public Works, Chairman Oldham.
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, call for the reading of the second ordinance in relation to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-four. An ordinance approving and accepting an extension to an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Hanson's Tree Service for the Yard Waste Grinding Project.
Second reading. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-four. An ordinance approving and accepting an extension to an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Hanson's Tree Service for the Yard Waste Grinding Project.
Final passage. Second. Rule call, please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for the purchase of a back truck.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It is approved.
That is all I have here.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Next, we have community development. Chairman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have four items this evening, the first of which is the discussion of annexation of property owned by E.W. Thompson. At the last meeting, a public hearing was held to hear comments about the appropriateness of an annexation petition for property owned by E.W. Thompson just west of Colton. No comments were received during the hearing nor since then, now that the required time period after the hearing has passed, council can consider an ordinance to annex the property into the city.
Okay. Any council discussion regarding the ordinance annexing the property owned by E.W. Thompson? Having heard that, call for reading the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one hundred. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson Incorporated into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three one hundred. An ordinance of the City of Sedalia, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by E.W. Thompson Incorporated into the City of Sedalia, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage.
Second.
Rule call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance approving and accepting a trademark sublicense agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets and National Main Street Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance approving and accepting a trademark sublicense agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets and National Main Street Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Second reading.
Second.
Rule call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right. Call for the reading of the first ordinance in relation to this budget amendment.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance approving and accepting a trademark sublicense agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets and National Main Street Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three ninety-two. An ordinance approving and accepting a trademark sublicense agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri, Sedalia Main Streets and National Main Street Center Incorporated for incorporating the Main Street America Program.
Second reading.
Second.
Rule call please.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
List?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.